Good evening, everyone. I'd like to have a solid meeting order. Let's start off with this, please, regents.
My pleasure, regents. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is saying, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Good evening. Welcome to our February 13th, 2017 Goodrich Village meeting. First thing that we would like to do tonight is give somebody an easy in and out. Loose enough.
Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to go over last year's audit. I've given you a smaller version of the printed report. It's in PowerPoint here with some highlights from the year. So, kind of run through that. And as always, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them even as we go through All right, so on the first slide, the village did receive an unmodified or clean audit opinion. That's obviously what you're looking for as council members. That's the highest level of assurance that CTA can give you on your financial statements. Actually, things were in great shape. Everybody in office was very cooperative and the audit actually... Couple pages here. The next two just basically talk about some of the items you'll see in the financials that you kind of wonder about. About 12, 13 years ago, we went to this new reporting model. It's called GAD 34, where all of the fixed assets of the village are put on the books on just on one statement. And along with its accumulated depreciation and all of the debt, those used to kind of be hanging out to the right. And now they're actually in the first two financial statements in the report report. So, those items, the first one here on slide number three, the capital assets for the year, you have two sets of financial statements going on here. One is the governmental funds, which are our normal stuff. And then the enterprise fund, which is the sewer fund. So, those two groupings in the governmental fund types, there's net $1,425, book value enough. Of course, most of that is this building and then some of the road projects. You've got there other books and bridges. The sewer fund, there's $813,000 in net assets left in that fund. Total gross cost is about $2.2 million minus the depreciation of about $1,400,000. The sewer system also, just so you know, is depreciated over 99 years. And we know we probably let our sewer system last 99 years, but that's kind of the government convention at the moment. On the next slide, page four, only long-term debt of the village are two sets of capital improvement bonds totaling just over $1,001,000. There's a 2003 and a 2013 capital improvement bonds out there. The 2003 still has $900,000 left on it. It goes out until 2044. And the 2013 with a 10-year issue goes to 2023. There's still $200,000 left on that.
And when did you say that balance goes out to?
2023. We had a 10-year and a third year. Officially, it's a third year, right?
Okay.
Which is pretty normal. That was the big one. That was when you did... That's probably when the sewer system was installed, right?
No, no, please.
That's probably... Okay. All right. Now, talking some numbers that you're used to seeing, like in your budgets and such. On slide number five, just the highlights of each of the funds. So, as you know, the village operates in these various silos that we call funds. Each one has its own self-balance instead of accounts, but they're all set up for their own specific purpose and according to law. So, as you're seeing, you also budget in these areas. Yes?
Just, I come from a government background. When we're looking at these and I think of these as appropriations, like the money has been put into like local street and that's where that money must be sit?
Yes.
We can't use it for anything else?
By law.
Right, okay. So, these are appropriations.
Yes.
That's what I know them as. Okay.
So, this is what Michigan Department of Commerce says you have to do as far as where you account for this money. It's all set up by statute. As we kind of run across the page, the general fund is our normal operating where most of the operations of the village take place. As you can see, this last year, about $618,000 of revenue, expenditures of about $598. So, you're about $20,000 to the good and you have fund equity to do here of about $330,000. So, the general fund's in good shape. The next two are the street funds. The funding for that comes from state, ROTAC, so Act 51 and some other... I thought state money is in there. So, a major street fund, about $94,000 of revenue, expenditures of about $84,000, adding about $10,000 to its equity. In local street, about $95,500 there, about $92,000, and expenditures adding $3,500 bucks there. So, those funds are not designed to build a huge amount of fund equity, but generally to take care of the projects, the ongoing projects that you have, first on service streets and then the smaller local streets. Capital projects fund, a little bit of a residual there, really not much going on. The revenue there was some interest and a spent of about $3,200 bucks, but there's still $33,000 left in that capital projects fund. The debt fund simply pays that bonded debt we looked at a couple of slides previous. And you're not like in a school system, you generally have a property tax village to pay that debt, but in your case, you're actually setting up the general fund to make these payments because they're capital improvement bonds. So, $84,000 in and $84,000 out, that's pretty much the way debt funds work. So, in total, the governmental fund types, just under $900,000 of revenue, about $862,000 of expenses adding, about $31,000 overall to equity amongst those funds. Now, to the far right there, you see the sewer fund, and we've got a couple of slides further back on that, but $408,000 in, about $496 out. So, we used equity of about $87,000. We put just over $100,000 of equity in that fund. Got a good chunk of that, and we'll look in the back. Good chunk of that is depreciation, so it's the non-cash right now.
Now, I'm sorry to hear these type of questions. If we get it as we go along. And the ending fund balances, you said that like these funds here are basically, you know, just to maintain like general business, I guess, or like what we've got currently going on. At what point would these be looked at as saying like, hey, there's way too much money in there, or whoa, there's not enough? Because I've heard, sitting up here, I've heard like two things, you know, like, oh, we don't have enough money in our general fund, or oh, there's, you know, there's too much money in the general fund. And then you say that our general fund is in good shape, that you don't want to have like a huge amount sitting in there. At what point does that, would that number deem too much?
Well, I don't know that you can have too much money in the general fund.
Okay.
Because you have limited sources of which to get money into the fund.
Right.
So, you basically have property taxes and sales tax on the state. Quite frankly, it's up to the village council to appropriate money.
Okay.
But within the other funds going to the right, those are there by law. So, you can't just take money out of the street fund and move it to general fund.
Right.
It's against the law.
Right, yeah.
But in the general fund itself, that's where you have some flexibility.
Yeah.
But quite frankly, the general fund, we have equity there to weather when times go bad and also to make capital improvements that you need around the village. There may be some myself. So, it needs to have a ready-to-go balance as well. That's totally... The appropriation process, if the village council goes through, you're not budgeted. That's how you affect that fund equity in that fund.
Okay, no, that's what I thought. I just, I wanted...
Totally your call.
I wanted the official...
Totally your call until you make it go negative, then the treasury...
Right, and that, yeah.
Treasury becomes involved in a lot of that.
Yeah, no, no, no. I don't want to go to those meetings.
Listen, ma'am.
Clarification if I could, please. You said we can't move money from the major fund over to the general fund, correct?
Well, you can charge indirect costs there for various things that are going on, but you can't just take that street fund money and move it over to the general fund and use it to...
Buy off the supplies.
Right. Well, here's my question that I've had a hard time getting answered the last few times we go through our budget. We have this... We move money from a general fund over into our major and minor streets, but then we turn around and rent our own equipment and move that back over into our general fund and show it as revenue.
Yeah, and that's pretty much, that's a normal thing in governmental units.
But that doesn't make any... I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't make a whole lot of sense why you move money over and then turn around, rent it, and move it right back. Your balance, you're not doing anything with the money.
Well, the equipment, it's rented. It is correct to charge that over there for the use of those street funds. The problem is generally you have more street projects going on, then you have revenue sources to make it happen, which basically is that street fund money that we get to Act 51 money. So, that's also part of council's appropriation process, so that if you have other things going on, like you need to chloride streets and things like that that need more money than you have there, then that's where the general fund takes the money over there. But I see what you're saying. Money comes in one side and goes back in another.
Right, it's a wash, it's not...
Well, I don't know if it's a wash or not, but...
And generally comes out.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
According to Act 51, which I explained before, general fund owns the equipment. They buy it and they own it. And the local and major streets rent that equipment per calculations that we received from Act 51. A truck's worth 20 bucks. Our car, I don't know. Blade's worth 5 bucks. So, we rent that equipment to major and minor roads as they use it, which reflects on the timesheets... Might as well put that in there, too. The timesheets tell you where that vehicle was used. If it was used in the park, then it doesn't go to major and minor roads. If it's used on the roads, then it's charged to major and minor roads. And then it's charged back to general.
And the reason for the rental charge, quite frankly, is that equipment will eventually need to be replaced. So, that's your kind of recouping the cost because you're not charging depreciation in the governmental funds themselves.
You can move these things between the major roads. You've got different items within the major road category.
Yes, right.
You're fine moving one item to another as long as it... Excuse me, as long as it stays in the major road category.
You can also move mine from minor road to major to minor.
Just not from major or minor to general.
You couldn't do major, minor before, but now...
Okay.
Moving on to look a couple of slides here, we'll just look at the general fund itself. So, this is kind of where most of our expenditures are taking place. So, the first slide on page six is the general fund revenue. As you kind of look around this wheel, you can see where the money comes from for the general fund's operation. So, 47% or $290,000 is property tax money, levy down village properties. 140,500 or 23% comes from the state sales and use tax. So, as you know, council, the budget process at the state has not been real kind of local units. It's starting to get better, but this is one of those areas where they pull some money back. And of course, sales tax is dependent upon the economy. So, as the economy goes up, sales tax, and now the gas tax and stuff coming up as well, that provides some fund. But you are, that area of your budget is very subject to what happens at the balancing. About 7% or $47,000 is that equipment rental. And then the garbage special assessment is about 17% of the budget. First, that pretty much goes in one side and then back out the other to pay for the service, but that's about $105,000. On the expenditure side, which is the next slide, so about $590,000 of expenditures this last year. 34% or 201 grand is for the general government operations. 17% is for the upkeep of village property. About 9% is for highway and streets that are not paid out of the local, major and local street funds. Another 17% is the garbage, and that's 133,500, almost the same number going up the other way. And then there's the transfers, or the 19% piece of the slide, the green piece. Those are the transfers over to the debt funds to make the principal interest payments and that transfer to the street funds of about 45 grand that took place this last year. Slide eight, just talking about the general fund budget. This is an area that treasury is very interested in these days. They want to make sure that villages, townships, and other municipalities are spending within their appropriation. As you know, you do appropriation act before your year starts and then you bring it in throughout the year as things come out that require movement. With general fund, you had budgeted $621,000 of revenue. About $618 came in, so we were about $3,000 under on our budget. Now, on the expenditure side, we budgeted $628, spent $598, so we came in $30,000 under or underspent our budget in that area. So, you were looking to use about $8,000 of equity. You actually put about $20,000 in that. So, all in all, two jobs of budget. Last two slides talk about sewer fund. So, really, the source of revenue for the sewer fund is, of course, the usage fees by your residents. So, $408,000 of revenue, 97% of that comes from usage fees. And the other slice here is our tap-in. So, as a new business comes online or a new home is built or you have to... That's when where the tap-in fees come in, about $10,500 this last year. And then on the expenditure side, so just over $400,000 of revenue for 97 or 96 in expenses, so you see we used equity there. But as we kind of run around this wheel, the biggest chunk of your expenditures are the usage fees. First, you pay the county a fee for everything that's going through the line. So, 54% of all the expenses go to pay the county. Another 12% there to the right is equipment maintenance, and those are also billings from the county, from the system itself. 11% or $55,000 is that depreciation piece, so that's the non-cash. And then other, about 17%, so adds and ends that are charged over there to the sewer fund. Original installation looks like it was 1991 with an extension in 2004. So, your infrastructure is 26 years old on its oldest piece. That's actually pretty young comparatively speaking to lots of other municipalities around. And of course, you know, the city is still on the stuff, other plus your stuff. Martin, Jackie, and all the ladies in office, they're a good crew to work with. They were there the whole time we worked, couldn't get away with us, and things are really well. All in all, I think the village's finances are in good shape. You're very conservative in your budgeting, as you can see in your numbers, you're hitting them pretty close. And like I said, you're at the mercy of balancing on a couple of lineups. The street funds are one of those areas, and of course, the sales and use tax that you receive back through the general fund. And other than that, property taxes. So, not a whole lot of opportunities for huge revenue changes as you kind of look through your opportunities of the village, which is pretty typical for municipalities. Any other question?
Yeah, real quick. In your original packet every seat in here, I'll kind of go through it with some of the expenditure boys. For health insurance that our employees get, what would I find that expense in?
It's probably something on line I call fringe benefits.
Okay, and I did find that line, I'm in a year under $16,274. And my question that I have is that we have an employee that exceeds that amount that we pay for insurance.
I think you have some fringe benefits being spread. Is that just the general fund or the association funding expenditures?
It just says operator's benefits.
Page, yeah.
On page six. Six hundred revenues, expenditure changes in that position, price will be fine.
So, that's the sewer fund. So, you have the same thing in the...
Because that was the only spot I could find fringe benefits in.
I think because if you look in the back of the report, the detailed schedule of the general fund, you'll see the fringe benefit pieces in there.
Okay.
So, be behind the footnotes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Just kidding.
Thanks, Kate.
Oh, thank you very much. And just for clarification, taxes have not gone up and are not going up, the property values are going up. So, if some people are looking at their tax things and saying, my taxes are going up, it's only because of the values going up. That's just people saying other things, that taxes have not gone up.
Mr. and Mrs.? Can I ask Jackie just a real quick question? Because I think she could probably answer this.
Please.
For the... Yeah. For the sewer fund revenue of $408,000 to what we spent, is there somewhere on this pie that we spent more this year than we did that year?
It's the depreciation.
It's just the depreciation. Thank you.
Go ahead and move forward with the approval of the agenda.
And a couple of things.
Oh, yes, yes, you do.
The removal of number two under new business, the cost for tax abatement. We're going to be setting up a meeting with the assessor and the attorney and to discuss exactly what it's all about. I've never done a tax abatement before, or would they pay you a fee? So, before you guys get any information or any more information on it, we're going to have a sit-down call. So, that's removed. And then under new business, number nine, where it's listed, law purchase and sale, if you could just put a slash and hot box. I have some information for that, too, that we can talk about at the same time, which is the piece of equipment that fills files.
Hot box. Is it broken? Is it broken?
It was up there. That's all I have.
So, I guess with that, we're looking for approval of the sequence of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda dated 13th of February 2017, when number two of new business crossed out and hot box, say it as number nine. Barack. Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty. Yeah.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes. Next one being the approval of the minutes for regular meeting for January 9th, 2016. Pretty good. Any questions on that? Everybody okay with the minutes from January 9th?
Just a quick comment, I thought. Under the public hearing that we have names and whatnot and what they have spoke of, can we bring that back on our public comments or just general public comments, who spoke and what their issues were?
We'll go to the clerk to her minutes.
Would you say?
He would like to know if we could add more to the minutes for a public speak.
For time?
That's what you have to do.
It's not a requirement of the law.
No, it's up to... It's up to the clerk.
Right, and I don't care to do that. It's trying to paraphrase what people are saying up there and they're... We pay $150 a month to have this video. Anybody can see the video and see exactly what they said, and that way I don't have to paraphrase.
Or have the rest of us accept your minutes. Anybody can pick two notes. It's up to the clerk, too, dot com. Any other comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion to accept.
Motion to approve the minutes for regular meeting of January 9th, 2016.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty. Yeah. Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
It's pretty down on treasurer's report, which is in good shape.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, also dated 13th of February 2017. Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty. Yes. Dick.
Yep.
Baldwin.
Green sheet is the bills and transfers.
Make a motion to approve the check register for the village Goodrich from 1 of 17 to 131 of 17.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty. Yeah. Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Next part is our public comment. This is agenda items only, please. Director comments to the chair. That was going to unfinished business, which is the park and rep committee. Prove the mission statement.
I need the mission statement on page four. Do you need a copy of it? If you have one.
You can have it in your order written on top of it.
And the mission statement just read, "The village of Goodrich Parks and Recreation Committee shall be a volunteer citizen advisory group made up with a minimum of five and a maximum of 11. Village residents appointed by the village council majority who shall guide the village council on recreational and beautification aspects of the village and have input on the budgeting of funds for such. Actions taken by the Parks and Recreation Committee require a majority vote of its committee members. The mission of the Parks and Recreation Committee is to provide and expand diverse recreational activities and facilities to protect natural environments and to promote local gathering points for the community to interact and enjoy. From the Parks and Recreation meetings that we've had, we felt that as... It shouldn't be too specific and it shouldn't be too vague. And this was the happy medium. It set a limit on the number of members that we should have, which somewhere in our packets that we received, there was a recommendation from the planning guys to max it out at 11, which that mission statement says. We also talked about having some input on a budget, because why have a committee if you don't have any money to do anything with? So, we felt that that was necessary to have that. And so, with that being said, on the mission statement side, if there are no questions, further discussion, I will make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation mission statement as I just read it.
Support.
Thank you. Barack. Good to do your job.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Is there any further input?
I do. When we appointed two council people to this, Parks and Recs, there wasn't anything that mandated us to do that. So, if the council only wishes to have one on there and more residents, that's up to you. We just carried over from the last council meeting or last council meeting to... I just wanted to throw that out.
Yeah, well, I don't mind being on it. You want to be on it?
Okay. Then I just wanted to say that.
Okay, yeah.
I'm recommending you. I just wanted to bring it.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Go ahead.
That didn't change the mission log there.
Barack.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A couple of concerns that I had that I spoke on before is the limitation of the 11. And I did see the information that Jackie has, and over that it is an advisory committee and they recommend having it up, and so you have that odd number and whoever shows up votes. I guess my concerns with this is going forward, is the voting going to be taking place and is the public going to be able to attend these meetings? Is the public going to be notified? Because I know that recently there was meetings that were scheduled, got changed, and then got rescheduled again, and I don't believe any notices and whatnot were going out. And I know in the last meeting that we had, it was addressed, we encourage anybody and everybody... And I know in the last meeting that we had, it was addressed, we encourage anybody and everybody to appear to these meetings, however, if you are constantly canceling and rescheduling, how is anybody gonna know when these meetings are going on if we don't have, you know, anything in favor? So, again, I'm not in favor of this, only because you guys are putting a cap on it. But if you're gonna go forward with this, voting has to stop over the internet and emails. It has to be done at a meeting setting.
I think that's why we discussed the last meeting, and we were gonna have the members vote. And I believe, I believe we, we talked about voting and not, and not, you know, calling another meeting to vote again, so.
Yeah, we're not gonna rehash, voting it over and over again, which is maybe the issue, like you're apparently saying, one vote, one vote only, and, you know, whoever's present, you know, we have to go look who the majority is.
Right, and these, the Parks and Rec meetings are the first Thursday of the month. Because of the grants, that's why we were talking about having additional meetings. And I, I don't, I've, I've been sick and have been recovering. I don't know if these have been posted on doors or, or whatnot. I don't, I don't hear the look. Okay, they are.
They are, correct.
Okay, so, yeah, they're, they're posted, and yeah, I mean, anybody's willing, you know, anybody who's willing to show up, and we've got seats, but usually there's one or two people in the audience, so.
There's, there's a lot of bigger committees and whatnot that are out there that have just an open forum. Who shows up and eventually takes the vote? It's not a set number. And I just think you kind of have to do a little bit of a restriction, if you will, to the community by setting an advisory board, is what that is, to just eleven people.
You said it was a committee.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think once you get too big, you're too big. It's hard to get folks up there and add it into, and then there's gotta be some kind of fixed number. I'm okay with the eleven. I mean, listen, you know, if we get more people to come in, well, yeah, if all eleven people come, that'd be great, but, yeah, I think if you open it up too much, then you're gonna be fighting trying to vote.
Well, I'd like to, but I feel probably you could.
Yeah, no, it's, it's too late. I need new glasses, I have no eyes.
As with the PC and ZBA, I would recommend that the Parks and Rec Committee have either five, seven, nine, or eleven members only, not even numbers. I'd also throw in that members must be approved by a majority of the council. Also, I note that actions taken by PR committee require a majority vote of the members on the committee, not members present at the meeting. So, if there is a nine-person committee, but only five show up, all five votes would be required to pass a motion, not three. That is from Chris, but I don't know where Chris is from.
That was so.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I guess what you wanted me to read.
Yeah.
You got a bunch of company.
Yeah, no, that's great scale.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry. Well, this is kind of a pain in the, going forward, are we gonna get minutes from these meetings that take place?
Oh, sure.
So, we can see the voting and the discussions.
I thought we talked about that, and I thought that we were going to get the minutes.
We always, always have minutes. Agendas are always posted. We only had one extra meeting there, when you're talking about all the meetings, we had one extra meeting for the grant. It was posted.
I think going forward, though, they should be included in our monthly packages. That's what you're referring.
That is.
Right, yeah.
And I, I agree with that. You know, we're responsible, we're, we're giving you the funding, we're gonna give you some funding. I think that we should have time to know what's happening.
If you finalize your vote on this thing, which we're waiting for, we can, I can set up something on the web for the Parks and Recs to the web. People can read those, but until you, I don't think anything will hurt. No sense doing that, and then you notice that it's the first Monday of the month at five thirty, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah, five thirty.
And then you can put the videos out there with the minutes. Your videos.
Videos are designed to align with the others.
I haven't had a clue what you're doing.
Not this time.
That's a private citizen doing the video, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we're off topic.
Motion.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yes.
Dick.
No.
Baldwin.
Number two. Our state administration.
Still working on ideas for some funding for the repaving of certain minor streets. Looking into the possibility of some of the infrastructure grants. I've been, I'll open the internet, research in federal money as well as state money. There's not a whole lot of it out there yet. Supposedly, given the new administration, there's gonna be a bunch of them coming. I haven't seen anything yet. I'm still working on. Trying to get some numbers to approach other individuals about some funding as well. Saw the guys hit the hot box out in this old patch on Eagle Road. And there was a couple of pretty nasty, I think there was one down by your place that I saw got taken care of today. I think that's probably it.
The hot box has been in for repairs, it's been on commission, so it's the holes.
Oh, okay.
We just got it back today.
I guess nine one.
Nine one one, they're working on a surcharge that will go, if we're the public, in May. Bridge form that you have early increase. I don't think they've set them finally yet. Let me just do it anyway.
Please.
I don't have anything to report on water and waste. It's not gonna show up on the filter chamber. Sheriff's Department, I've got a new form, and I'm happy, and I'm working with somebody down at the county on a list of input as to what more you would like to see on this. I think that we should have, not street addresses, but streets, maybe? So that if there's something going on in a neighborhood, we know that there's something going on in a neighborhood.
How am I gonna know about the naked eye of the police?
We have somebody on council here that could probably help us out with some input. I think he probably knows how to fill those out.
I'm sorry, he was tutoring me.
Yeah, the second page comes right straight off of the deputy's data reports. You can see the numbers, zero, 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 zero six, zero seven. Those are all coded for record keeping, and those are, that's a tally of the actual, the actual activity, and up at the top, it's very light. You can see day shift, six A to six P, night shift, six A, or six P to six A, swing shift. And it's broken down by shift. But that, that's the actual tally of their activity, and those are, most of those, unless it's deemed something otherwise, most of those are aligned on the daily activity report, recorded about every fifteen minutes or so. As far as the front page of the report, I'm not exactly sure where these figures came from or how, how they tallied these. I haven't seen this report yet. Jackie said she was working at some, with somebody down at the county to get these. I'm not sure exactly who she was working with, but it looks like these were taken probably out of the jail records. Looking at the offense codes and the and the line items, the description of the line items, it looks like these were taken either out of my car or out of the jail records.
Is there anything that you can think of that we can include, so that it serves us a little better?
To get traffic. Traffic suspended revoked. The only thing that I might, oh, okay, I missed it on the second box down here. OWI, for enforcement of, OWI enforcement. Really don't, don't see a whole lot. That would be common enough to add.
In terms of location?
Yeah, like geographical, where it's happening.
You know, like, like Bridge Road and Hego, or Palo.
Right, yeah.
How much is this?
Jimmy named names.
Off of a significant activity report, those are tallied at the end of the shift. If the deputies have something of significance, a B and E break-in, a drunk driver, a warrant of arrest, something like that, those are tallied line by line at the end of the shift. And then that's what we used to get, they were all handwritten.
You send me an email of things that I should be asking him to do for us, and anybody else, too.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Where it says moving violation on the long page, does that mean they wrote money tickets?
Yes.
Well, that'll happen.
Yes.
Questions?
Moving violation, well, you, you've got.
Right, I mean, accidents are separate.
Right, accidents are separate. Moving violation is speeding. Yeah, fail to stop, something like that. Non-moving violation would be like suspended tabs. No, no proof of insurance, something like that, more of an administrative. Line number sixteen, where you've actually got citations issued. That's a breakdown by shift of the actual citations issued. And then you've got traffic warnings, line number seventeen under that. If, if, if somebody was stopped, the, and they were let go, you know?
That's usually what we receive.
Right, son, somebody gets chewed out on the side of the road, don't do that again. Be out of your way, kind of thing. That's recorded as a traffic warning.
That's a good observation, Jackie. Don't be screaming between six P M. and six A M. See, we don't see where you're going with that.
I just go out at fifteen, oh, man, I'm bad. So, if anybody has any suggestions, I'll look at them. I can't hear, I'll get it, but the locations are important for people wondering if somebody's running negative in the neighborhood. I don't think that would work. Thanks, Charlie.
In case, just for public notice, and I haven't confirmed this with anybody at the sheriff's department, but I had heard that there were several vehicle break-ins, and one vehicle that was stolen out of a garage in Green Ridge South. So, for the public, lock your cars, double-check your doors. I don't know if it was kids lifting door handles and finding open, you know, an open car door that was left unlocked, and then something being taken, or whether they were smashing windows or jimming lives. I, like I said, I haven't confirmed it yet.
Any other questions? Number three, code enforcement. Well, I talked to Mr. Lucick about the barn on Dutch Road, but I really haven't gotten back. I knew he was gonna go and talk to me.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that as well.
He's been working, I, I, last month it was an issue with the weather, and I understand that. They were gonna move some equipment in, and I kind of told David, if they moved something in, I mean, it should be fenced. It's pretty dangerous.
Right.
But I, I can't speak for what's happened, I just know that David is, typically, he stays on top of that. If you had something else to?
Just that Mr. Lucick was working on an issue on Ridge Road that was resolved to everybody's satisfaction. Did a great job on that. That's it.
Number four is the administration. We'd like to thank Downtown Christmas.
They sent a note to the GPW as well as council for all the work that was done on behalf of Downtown Christmas to get the streets cleaned and everything ready to go, and your participation in allowing them to close the street. A couple of months ago, I brought forward charges for the community room, and I don't think anything's been done on that yet. We need to raise that price. Right now, it's twenty-five dollars to rent the room, and seventy-five dollars for maintenance. And if they leave the room clean, then we return the seventy-five dollars. But the floors are getting older, and the walls are, are in pain, so we're recommending that you increase that, even if it's fifty-fifty and it stays at, check for a hundred. I don't know if anybody has any more input. Mr. Baldwin and I were talking about it, but when you have somebody come in, just clean, cover it, there's a lot of carpet. And again, we're gonna need painting on the walls or whatever.
All right, just stop covering the carpet.
I know, it's true, it's quite often. And we don't charge for nonprofit, for the, for the Parks and Recs made, or the garden clubs, or if they leave it a mess, then we charge.
Keep it a reasonable figure for the residents, but we just, we have to get a little bit more to handle this, I suppose.
It's quiet. If I remember correctly, you were gonna raise the rate up, and if it was clean, you're only giving a certain portion back?
Right, right now, it's twenty-five to rent and seventy-five for maintenance, and if it's clean, we return all seventy-five. Where if we charge fifty, fifty, this is very economical for people to rent. The Lions Club is a lot more to rent, a little bigger facility than we are, but I don't know if people can rent above the library anymore. The township doesn't rent there all out, last I heard. That could have changed, I don't know. So, to have kids birthday party or something here for fifty bucks, it's really not a bet. Or you can do whatever you want, as far as prices are concerned.
It's not much of an increase, but it would help. Fifty-fifty, I think it's still pretty reasonable if you're not gonna rent any place for fifty dollars.
I have a motion on that. I'll make a motion that, what do we call this, like the community room? Goodrich Community Room, charge a hundred dollar rental fee, fifty, and that will be returned upon
Inspection.
Inspection and no damages done to the room, where fifty dollars is checked as a standard rental fee.
Support.
Barack.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Five K run.
Lynn Hoffman, lives in the township, but she's trying to put on a raise for women at risk for just one on the head again, human trafficking. And she just would like to have the meeting place in the park on April twenty-third, and they would start there, run up to Hego, to the school, down gate, around Green, back up Ridge, and back to the park. She just finds you to be in wear, but so does, like, if her consent said it's fine for her. There's nothing else going on in the park, so if everybody's in agreement on April twenty-third.
Evidence is barricades, does she want barricades, or?
No, she said she didn't need, she's gonna have about fifty people. And then to give an update on the use of the Visa card, we have been, huh?
No. Is that your skin?
We, um.
Seriously, what are we doing on the five K run? Everybody has scored that?
Yeah, I said, I'm sorry. We found out that a couple of things at this point we can't put on Visa, but one thing that we can put on there is the almost nine thousand dollars a month that we paid for the card. So, that's already been set up and put on there.
Wow.
Make it two, that's what we have.
Make it two, that's gonna be happy.
And what's that, what's the return on that?
That's gonna be one percent at least, so.
One percent, wow.
Minimum.
Minimum of one percent.
Yeah, yay.
That is checked with the consumers, and at this point, they're telling us that businesses can't use a Visa card. So if you have anything more.
I'll come out and watch, I gotta do it.
If it doesn't include using it monthly.
She doesn't use it.
What we do is, you have to set it up so it's a monthly automatic deduction, because I don't use the credit card.
Right, yeah, I can help you.
So, but if, if you can get consumers to.
That's actually three grand right there.
Automatically, yeah, because that's a utility, so you get five percent on that one, right, so, yeah, because I got online and I set up an account for the village and I went through all.
Oh, consumers.
And I gone to consumers, and then when I went in to try to set up the payment, when I got to the business, it said it was for residents only.
Okay, well, look at that, I'll look at that, yeah.
Then, yeah, great.
Sounds good, I'm happy, that was good. I was supposed to go to me and get plates and the wrong box.
Should be in the address. That's whatever I'm having.
So anyway, we're working on that, the Visa, um, the both of our trucks said they go in one truck, let's put on the Visa the other truck, let's put on the Visa. And Matt's here, who can tell us what is wrong with the one truck, what's the matter with it?
It was a turbo, I guess it was seized, uh, the medium-sized dump truck, the forty-five hundred.
The turbo?
Turbo, yes, it's a diesel.
By the time that's done, it's about four grand.
Right, yeah, those aren't cheap.
No.
And it's still there, right?
Correct, yeah.
How's the dump? And the other truck was about four grand. This one won the Visa, the other one.
I like spending Visa, that's like crazy.
Well, that was just good, at least we're in your circle.
Yes, sir.
That's the idea unless somebody else has something.
Absolutely, I'll sit there. Number five is the sidewalks.
Anyone that somebody else wants to report something?
Attorney.
I gave everybody an envelope, um, the assault, so the, um, Portella lawsuit against the village, I have to go to court tomorrow. Because the, since we won that lawsuit, the attorney is now suing us for sixteen thousand dollars for his attorney fees. So I'll be there tomorrow to try to work with the attorney to get that thrown out.
I'm sorry, Jackie, what do you have that?
It was in an envelope that said confidential, and I know everybody got one.
Was that, was the last one?
It was underworn?
It was in your box. I think somebody stole your stuff.
I'm not trying to do that publicly, I don't, I don't.
I just put stuff in a rolling box, I didn't take anything. He just got more stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's in an envelope, but it's stamped confidential.
Unless it's sideways, maybe down in the bottom, I'll, I'll look.
Anybody have any questions on that? Other than that, we will give the attorney to, um, we don't give the attorney. And Good Times, um.
He's inching close. I didn't bring a gentleman.
Anybody sent me anything?
There, there was a problem, 'cause I tried to get some of my stuff today, couldn't get in there.
Or yours, your in, Chris, too.
Due to I T. right.
Um, I, I just wanna make a clarification to it, Good Times, we are Good Goodrich Festival and events, Good Times Festival is part of the event. We're a nonprofit, we do sponsor what we did at the festival this year, we gave thirty-six hundred dollars to active community, took some to the parks, scholarship for high schools, so, it's just a part of us, and we did participate in the village, uh, Christmas this year. So those, those are things that we wanted, be a broader scope of just the past, you know, just the past, Good Times, part of, we wanna do movies in the park, we wanna do some other events too, that does bring community together.
We wanna be all times, I mean, right?
Sometimes. So, first of all, I wanna thank the village for helping us last year, um, you know, the school district and Justice College is very helpful in making the festival a great event. I think some things we can improve and improve on, um, some more barrels for Erie Street when we close, and we did have an incident at Christmas this year, and I was in the incident, I got hit by a car. Yeah, someone turned, we did have barrels and someone, and I physically was hit by a car, so we do need more barrels.
That's not a problem. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I had to avoid that, 'cause, um, it wasn't a good experience for the girl that hit me.
I'm sorry.
So, so, and we had multiple people directing traffic and we still, they still drove through the barrels, we do have a problem on Erie Street too, when we have, when we have, people are constantly driving through. So we might need some reminders, something to tell people that street's closed, you know, if we can, as we're moving forward. The village has always been very generous, the school just very generous in making this festival go forward and, and grow, and our footprint is getting bigger. So, um, the school's been generous as letting us go further north. So, I guess the second part of the question is a hard one, there are some concerns with the drain, I don't know if decision's been made, where the drain's going, do we need an alternative plan where the festival is held? So, that's something we probably need to talk about going forward, um, how that affects the festival.
I will check on that for you, I think we can request that they, if they do win, then, in the summer, they start at the other end.
No, no, he'll start, I'm sorry, he will, he will start at the creek, and they will go that way, the upstream, if you will, on that drain.
So where the end?
It could interfere, but we have no control.
Understood, so we're, we're already preparing to have a Plan B if we've got.
I, I think that would be a good plan.
So I think good communication between us.
We can request that they.
I don't, I don't wanna change.
Not as long that they wait until after the first.
I don't, I don't, we don't.
No.
I don't wanna change things, I, I wanna, I wanna have a good collaborative effort that we work together.
This is, this is going to be the drink commissioner's discretion, I, I, all we can do is we can try to get as much information as we can.
Understood, so, we, we're already talking, we already have a Plan B, so, that's all I just ask, I'm just asking for good communication that we, that we work together on, okay?
If I, if I could, not to go into great detail, but I had to talk with Josh, trying to get an update on what was going on, and he did say, when the project starts, if we can give him a date on when, Good Times together, which is laying that amount of pipe to go through there and to get it flattened back out, so they can still have their, uh, you know, a festival and whatnot, shouldn't be an issue, shouldn't take that long to get through there, they just gotta know when they're gonna start and when the actual thing is.
And, and I've, I've talked to Susan too, and it, and it's, it's about the contractors, and it's out of everybody's control, you know, there's so many hands that are involved, and, and, all we can do is try to pass the information.
No, understood, and that's, that's not a problem, we're flexible enough where we can keep them, just we like to keep the same spot, so everybody knows where to go.
And we'd like you to keep it too.
And the festival is August fifth, it's first Saturday, um, in August. I think, uh, if we could, we could permanent gate on the tennis court, we, we have something, um, who was very generous at the time, but I think, uh, if you'd have a, a gate, um, block gate, that'd be helpful, we can do that. Fourth thing on my list is, we've got approximately a hundred and two to a hundred and five empty light posts, and if you turn and look at that picture right in the middle, that's what our village looks like with milk flags on it. So, Good Times, we, we, if the festival and that would like to pose a po- a possible partnership where we buy ten banners, maybe the village rides ten banners, ask capital approval. You drive through any village, any municipality, Otisville, Holly, everyone's got banners, I put the football banners up this year, we had forty-two banners up during football season, and very positive results. This is something that we could have every year, um, I gave some examples of banners, you know, Happy Holidays, Fourth of July, Welcome to Goodrich, whatever it may be, uh, but it's something that brings more sense of community also. And, uh, I don't think, um, they run about forty-five dollars a piece, two-sided banners, we've had, uh, no incidents with.
Sleep, we had Christmas banners and, um, flag banners, but over the course of the years.
They deteriorate.
They deteriorate.
So it's something we could take into consideration, and we'd be willing to do ten at the village with, with matches and that, and something to throw up a year, and maybe get some of those filled up.
I, I would go back to the gate, uh, you showed maybe some interest that you guys could help us out in the price of that gate, and I know we looked into that last year, but I don't recall how much it was. I don't know.
I, I mean, that's all.
I know exactly.
I'm just curious, would you be entertained if I?
We, we'd be entertained, we'd look at something if it, you know, sure, because it, it was kinda taxing to, to move that fence back and forth, uh, ten times, and, you know, that's, that was difficult.
Was it hard?
It's difficult, late at night. So, number, number five on our agenda, we're asking for approval of the beer tent again, we had, um, full security there, uh, people at the gate, we hired security, we had law enforcement there, we had no incidents, incidents, um, no complaints to my knowledge, and, uh, the park was cleaned up. I think Mark can attest to this, and better than, than we got it, we, garbage cans were put, emptied, taken to the dumpster, so we did a good job, um, and we asked for best to have this again as a community gathering. And I think that's all I've got for today. Okay, so we're just, uh, asking for your approval so we can apply for a license again, if that'd be the main idea.
On beer tent?
Yes. Question's got to be.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, um, we approve, uh, the beer tent for Good Times and Good Rich. On, by August twenty-seventeen.
Horace?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
The Camperdy?
Yeah.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, would it could, could we also discuss the banners that had another meeting, or how, how would you go about that?
Why don't we see if we can bundle that with, with the gate, and maybe we'll have some people in here that's gonna work on a gate for us, and we can have them go down and look at it against prices, I know we got a price last year, but it was more than what we were willing to spend.
Right, I think, I did look, we're speaking a nonprofit too, we're, we're kinda skinny too, so.
Well, we'll, we'll look into it.
Looking at our Russell.
I mean, we could do it the same way we did it last year, I mean, it was an inconvenience, but we know it can be done.
Right, it's a workable solution right now.
We need to figure out how.
What might be moved.
Right, how much are, how much are these banners, you're saying like around like forty bucks?
They're forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars?
Two, two-sided banners.
Two-sided?
Yep.
Could, um.
We have a lot of the, um, brackets already, that's the, that's the most important part, expensive part.
We purchased, uh, the youth football and varsity football, we purchased another forty-five this year, so we've got post banners for eighty-four right now, so.
So, um, just, uh, because I, I have an idea, um, on one of these, it says your message here, where like you could, your, on page two, third one from the, um.
Sure.
Lot that says your message, now, I have forty-five dollars that I'll hand over to you to get a banner. Can I have like, you know, my initials included in that, as like, I know the school sells bricks with like people's names to make a walk with?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the advertising restrictions are of, of the village.
They do that in, uh, in village?
Yeah. I mean, a few months, so we've got sponsorships on banners.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'd, I'd be wanting to write you a check for forty-five dollars right now to get a banner.
Maybe you could get some community involved.
Right.
They do that in.
Probably not a product.
I'll take the phone cell, you take care of that. I'll buy you a beer.
But, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find out, I want a Camperdy Good Times and Goodrich banner, I think that would be pretty sweet, but regardless.
Right, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a reason why I can't say Welcome to Goodrich established, you know, and just, and as you're coming in, there's no reason for it.
Yeah, we could, we could get a list of the people and put them in the newsletter, show some praise to the.
And then we're gonna have Darren Russell, we put some of them.
I can see, you will.
I know, I know.
Oh, there's, there's only one guy standing.
Buy you another beer. Also, any, anything else?
We're looking to that, we're looking for holiday, we're just coming up.
Like, would you, you know, would you need to know all the banners, I guess?
I, I think, I think we need, our, our meeting with Good Times is, uh, next Tuesday, and our next meeting would be the, uh, second Tuesday of March, so probably before then, so we can talk, you know, put that in front of them, so we can appropriate the funds also.
And I will continue to talk to the drink commission, I will talk to, I will talk to again, see if she can give me all the details and the heads up as possible, best I can do is keep you informed with what.
We've got the, the Michigan Vietnam Veterans Memorial Law coming in this year too, it's taken us three years to book this, so they're coming in, so I really need to collaborate.
I agree.
Yeah.
Are you gonna have a few banner trucks present at that as well?
In downtown? I, I, that wouldn't be up to me, I, I think.
They just have that Sanford, maybe Sanford, who loves fire.
I, I, I'm not sure, you know, we're just trying, trying to grow the event, grow the entire show, and, you know, sponsors and banners.
Do they do anything like that, or they just bring in the wall and that sort of?
Just bring in the wall, the traveling wall of Michigan veterans.
I should adjust. Okay, thank you for that. Under new business, I want to use the sewer request for the Goodrich Haven, we've done this before with other projects, this is the first step, if they, if somebody's coming to us, they wanna know, if everything goes well, if they can get the sewer. Uh, because if they can't get the sewer, there's no reason for them to go to the planning commission. With that said, they go to the planning commission, and then they'll end up back here, and then we can take an add to, delete from their request, whatever their plans are, initially, this is nothing more, so that they can continue on the process.
Um, there is a letter from John Bryan that, um, is not completed, the entire, um, review of our system, but the review of the area where this project would be, as it states in the letter, it's, um, we have adequate capacity. They are putting in seventy, um, senior living apartments, and that's what they're asking for, seventy, so I'm looking for a motion to approve seventy units or not. They're coming to the planning commission, um, for the rezoning, to a planned unit development on the twenty-seventh, there will be a public hearing, and then they're back before council on the sixth of March.
February twenty-seventh?
February twenty-seventh, right. So, looking for action.
Well, I, my question I gotta, this, uh, this is just to go, to go forward, saying that they can have the sewers, and it's gonna go to the planning commission for the rest of.
Then they will add two gateway, then they'll suggest things, and we can make alterations, we can do whatever.
But is this by us approving this, is this saying that we wanna go forward with this plan?
No, this is just saying that there is sewer capacity, if the plan doesn't fall through, I, it's just a very first.
I mean, they can't sell it to somebody else or anything like that, it's just, for this particular project, they're asking for seventy units, so that they can know that they can move forward with the plan. The plan goes to, like I said, the planning commission on the twenty-seventh for the rezoning to a planned unit development, there are plans upstairs, I don't know what's looking at. But right now, they're asking for the sewer units, and then they go and ask for the rezoning, and then they come to the council, and then the actual plan goes to the planning commission at the end of March, on the twenty-fourth, I think, or the twenty-seventh or something. So they're asking for approval to hook up to these seventy units.
And then that's my last question that I would have, um, speaking with, I know there were some areas that were stuck on, um, some various parts of this town for future development, uh, that may be coming down the road, would this have any impact on any of those other future proposals that may be coming through? I'm referring to, um, Ridge Road, and there was supposedly some possibly on Dutch Road, uh, one of them was also being looked at. Uh, one of them was also being looked at, or the apartments over here, but we know that's how, not that.
We have approximately, um, a minimum of four hundred sewer units, and there's more than that in capacity, which would take care of anything. I mean, I have nothing on Dutch Road. This project has been working for fifteen years. They have come before council before and asked for units that they didn't necessarily have, uh, concrete number. And I haven't talked to, um, the people that, um, when you were just talking about, uh, bringing, and, uh, bringing, um, Ridge Road, years. So I don't know if they're planning on doing anything like that. I guess the one across the street at this particular point in time, I don't have any paperwork.
That's all, all units are available.
Yeah. And that takes care of Goodrich Meadows and, um, the rest of Fairview. I think there's only two or three on the existing, very much estates, left maybe five, um, that need to happen. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, um, to let the Goodrich Haven senior living folks know that we do have seventy hookups, um, that would accommodate their alleged proposal to planning commission.
Veronica?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Next one we have scratched. Uh, next one is the acceptance of our audit.
Just made a motion to accept the audit.
I made a motion to accept the audit.
Veronica?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
And the next one would be the appointments.
I have four, um, here from the four applications and, uh. Would you get those, would you get them? The only thing that I would suggest is try to, um, pick different areas of the community that would be represented when anybody goes onto a, a board if you have, if you have a choice. I haven't, other than Wendy, I haven't talked to any of these people. I know a couple other people, I've talked to Andrea, um, but the other ones, I'm not talking to them.
And that is Hudson, correct? And we're looking for how many?
Three, to make it eleven.
And the other one, you can have your alternate, so.
One of the original ones, Ida slowly resigned, so that was three.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
I didn't even make alter, did I?
I, I like the idea of giving an alternate.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Then I'd make a motion to appoint, um, Ms. Hudson, Ms. Schwartz, Ms., how'd you pass the last one? Ronaldo?
No.
Yeah. With the, uh, alternate that we need.
Any special? Roll call please.
The alternate will be, twenty, twenty. Okay. All right, Veronica?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Baldwin?
That was a silly question since we just voted on it, but the alternate, would that justify if, um, there's only ten there and she would show up, she would make the eleven?
Uh, next on the agenda is the aquatic nuisance agreement. And we still have a permit from the state, correct? And that's going to probably more years?
True, we don't have to do the four hundred dollars on, you know, um, but up in the first paragraph it tells you what it would be for the first treatment and the second treatment. We did do it last year. Last year was the first year that we did it for a number of years, so, um, it's up to you whether you wanna do it again this year or wait for a while just before you make a decision on it, or.
Was there a big impact, could you tell difference? Could you tell difference when they did it?
Yeah, there's, there's, well, that doesn't go all the way down to her eyes.
I know the tailwind, so it doesn't really, doesn't have.
Oh, yeah, it makes a big difference when they, when they do it, it just depends on, at one point we had to, to take up water out of it a couple times now, um, and the summer that we had, filled all weeds, so we didn't have to do it for five or six years. And last year, I think, was about the first year that, that we did do it. Now, if they're starting to grow back again, you know, because they've germinated or whatever they do. It isn't a bunch.
Counsel?
How much, by my, I think, every time this has come up, I have spoke against it, because I think it should be kind of a sheer cause with the mill pond residents. And I restate that because there is no public access for the village residents, um, to do anything they want on pond, whether it's voting or fishing or whatnot. I mean, it's, it's just hard, it's hard for me to take everybody's taxpayer money to pay for something that's mainly benefiting the residents down there. Like, I get that there is, um, scenic privileges, if you will, you know, to keep the pond clean, but rather than having that, but.
It enhances the beauty of the town entirely, if you will. Uh, we can hold off and see how bad it gets, and it could probably, you know, I haven't done it at any time. Uh, once again, we do have the permit, although we just hired somebody to do it.
Usually if they, um, do it in June, so like Mr. Baldwin says, if you want to wait and see what it looks like in June, they can either schedule it for that too, or in the future, or the second treatment, whatever that schedule would be.
There are a lot of factors when it comes into the weed growth, but, uh,
Is that a motion?
Correct.
Support. Roll call please.
Veronica?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yes.
Dick? Yes.
Baldwin?
You two, I don't know about.
Yeah, yeah, I have a nice flight tomorrow.
Maybe I'm too close to him, you know?
I don't know, do I?
I can start confidence me, but if anybody wants to get sick and stay home from work tomorrow.
I'm headed to Florida, I don't want to get sick. Uh, budget amendments, please.
I'll start on page one, um, we've had an increase in, um, some of the monies that are coming in. The large, the large one is the rebate that we got from just the salt spreader for the eight thousand dollars, uh, the extra money that came in, um, almost to thirteen thousand three forty. And as we go through the budget, um, I don't know, it pretty much stays the same because I'm switching, switching back and forth, I'll explain that to you on page two. The unemployment tax, because we haven't had anybody laid off, um, protecting unemployment is not going to be as high as I anticipated, so I took a thousand out of there and put a thousand in village operations. So that equals that off, and that's pretty much what it is all the way through. I'm rounding people up, I'm speaking. If you have any questions about anything, please let me know. This goes through one thirty-one on two seventeen. Um, the next one is insurance, um, we get our insurance bills prior to the budget. I try to get as close as I can to, um, what that cost will be, but it's increased by two thousand dollars for property insurance. Going into page four, as you can see, gas and oil went down three, and, um, equipment shop went up, um, three hundred dollars for, um, the salt spreader, the other salt spreader we bought. Again, I was, uh, going down to the building department, two forty-two, came out of office operations and went into memberships. The state is requiring us to have, um, different memberships than we have in the past, but all of Genesee County has gotten together, most of Genesee County has gotten together and, um, split the cost of this particular membership that we had to do. So it saved us a lot of money because it was like fifteen hundred dollars per ounce of, and it was two forty-two. Um, going into page five, the drain project that we did, um, in conjunction with the, the fire department and Clarence Street, um, he didn't finish that in last year's budget, so those, per what those figures are, um, that added up to eleven hundred thirty-three dollars and, uh, eleven hundred three hundred thirty-one dollars. Um, and as you can see, that's cheaper than what we added to the budget of the thirteen to forty. Um, street lights, again, I've reduced that five hundred and forty-eight dollars and increased the holiday lighting, um, by that hundred and forty-eight dollars. On page six, um, park maintenance and repair, um, again, I increased, um, that by sixty-one and reduce the park equipment because at this point we didn't buy any park equipment. And then transfer to two thousand and three debt. Uh, when I put the numbers in there, I transposed them, so, um, that's adding the thirteen thousand seven fifty-three to, um, pay that bill. And when we, the, um, revenue that we budgeted was twenty thousand dollars over, um, expenses, so that's taken care of with that. Does you understand what I'm saying there? Can anybody here? So we have, um, still sixty-eight hundred twenty-two dollars that's not allocated in general fund. Anybody have any questions on general fund? This is mostly just like housekeeping, changes, major roads, um, nothing has changed in major roads. Minor roads, I just adjusted the minor road wage routine in winter, again, an increase and decrease by twenty-six hundred dollars. That was it for minor roads. Going to, um, the two thousand and three debt, I wrote on there that the fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand one sixty-nine will be paid, that's the balance on that account, will be paid, with the principal payments done in March, I mean, May, like we talked about at budget time. Going to page ten, um, the amount for maintenance and repairs, that's on the bike path, that's when we put the, um, covering on the bike path, three thirty-two ninety-four. That fund balance prior to that was eighteen thousand five eighty-one, so that leaves us a little over fifteen thousand dollars to do some other repairs on the, the bike path, um, when the winter breaks. We have an issue with water coming out of the, the hill, but creates a big ice spot. Someone talked to Ethan about it and probably Mark, I don't know, about putting a drain in there and taking it down to the catch basin. So we would be using more fund balance for that. Sewer fund, um, again, um, office separation versus utilities, um, four seventy-six, in and out there. And again, the principal payment, um, for that, um, two thousand and three debt, or two thousand and thirteen debt, that's the same figures that are on the other page. So basically, these are just adjustments and, um, still leaving us with six thousand dollars in general fund that's not allocated and using fund balance in the elements. Looking for a motion to approve.
Any questions, counsel? And I will make a motion that we accept the revenues and expenditures report as presented.
Veronica?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Uh, we have the resolution twenty seventeen dash zero two funding the DNR grant accessible.
And we need the entry for it too. And Lyle, can you with that?
So as we do, um, we have a nice park downtown with an entrance to downtown, but we don't have an access walkway into the park. And this grant is to fund that access walkway into the park, um, to improve that turnaround driveway at the top. Um, then, so we could go down to the, going in on the walk. Did I get, that, send it to, I think you sent it to someone.
Send you.
Yeah, sure. And, um, China and, and John's on over.
I apologize, Andrew, am I in? I didn't work today, so I didn't get your address.
Okay. I'll see more of that, I respect it.
So we have the council do that for us.
Obviously they work at G O, like, it's totally the Chevy.
I know, maybe, maybe. Tonight did those for us. So we're at point where we basically, um, need to answer, um, whether you guys will fund the potential nineteen thousand. And I want to remind you that there's a good chance it won't be nineteen thousand. You may be able to get pro bono, pro bono help, and maybe you'll be able to get donated help, and maybe you'll be able to volunteer help, you know, so the nineteen thousand, I mean, that's the worst. But if we get, um, you know, raise some brainstorming or thinking with different ways, um, it may not be nineteen thousand dollars at all.